It's calling to Newcastle City Council Regular Meeting of Monday, February 5th, 2024. Please raise your flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Can I get the approval of the agenda? Let me approve the agenda. There you go, motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of Tuesday, January 16th, 2024.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to swearing in. Swearing in Police Officer Justin Breon. Did I pronounce that right? If I have you come on up. If you have any raise your hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Justin Breon.
Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support.
I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election or appointment.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election or appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Or cause it to be done by others and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Any nominations for recognition? We don't have any certificates of recognition for tonight. So moving on to citizens business and writing. We have Mark Williams appointed to planning and zoning board. So we have an application for Mark Williams. His reason why he thinks that he would be a good board member or explain why he would like to be a board member. He said, "I was a member prior. I know the expectations and I like the folks and I would work with." Is what I have on here. And his term would be for three years.
I move to appoint Mark Williams to the zoning and planning board.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
I have a question. How many openings do we have?
Two.
So if this passes with Mark, then only F1?
Well, then we got another one.
Right. So then it'll be full?
Yes.
Excellent. And Mark was on the board prior.
So did he get off because he didn't like those people and now he wants on because he likes these people?
I think his terms are... I'm sure you share. You're shaking your head.
I don't think so.
He didn't like those people. Walked in, handed his stuff to Becky.
So he walked in, handed his stuff to Becky and was done. So no notice or anything, but no reason for why he's wanting to get back on?
He likes these people.
Okay. All right. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, moving on to number two. I am going to watch this last name. Kathy Levas...
Levaser.
Levaser? Okay. She is asking to be appointed as well for a three-year term. Her reason is, "I am interested in serving the community and being helpful to Newcastle citizens. I have time to do what may be necessary."
I would wait a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Has she been a longstanding member of the community?
She's from Newcastle. She's been away, living in Shania and just moved back. She's dead at her sister's.
Okay.
And she was on the chamber of honor, too, when she was here?
Okay. I just didn't know the process. It just seems like if there's applications, was there any sort of interview process or anything? I mean, I knew Mark was on the board prior. But I just didn't know if they're... Were they just approving the appointment because the board actually conducted interviews? And/or are we just certain for people and those were the only two applications that you received? Those are all...
Well, I believe, first of all, there were really applications we received and we ran ads for a few weeks, months prior, and these just came in.
Okay.
So I think the board needs them.
All right. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Okay, moving on to number three in citizens in writing. Apex Mechanical Plumbing and Electrical License. So we got the following request for plumbing and electrical license. All fees have been paid. Copies of their license and group of insurance and bond have been provided for 2024. Contractor is Apex Mechanical. Master plumber is Justin Strong. Drilling and plumbers are Josh Boyer and James Burton. Master electrician is Gavin Catherling. Apprentice electricians is Colby Bessler and Adam Bumburger.
I am moved that we approve the plumbing and electrical license for Apex Mechanical.
There you go, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to citizens business, number four. Walker's Electrician for Electrical License. The following requested electrical licenses. All fees have been paid. Copies of their license and group of insurance and bond have been provided for 2024. Contractors license is Walker Electric. Master electrician is Sherman John Walker. Apprentice is Alec Walker.
I move to oppose the Walker Electric application.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, citizens business and writing, number six... Or number five. Marisol Gonzalez Sewer Forgiveness. Letter dated February 2nd, 2024, to whom it may concern regarding sewer grievance. I, Marisol Gonzalez, am writing this to ask for some of my water bill to be reduced during the freezing weather, where temps dropped to like negative 30 degrees. My water pipes froze. Took my son and I a while to thaw them out, which took a while to thaw out. When we finally got them thawed, we didn't realize that our pipes had busted till our water was losing pressure. Turns out it was leaking under our kitchen sink, so we had to tear out the floor to get to the leak. My son fixed it. I did not find out how much water was leaking till we took it apart. My water bill is higher than I have ever had it, so I am asking for help with it. I cannot afford to pay all this by the 15th or have my water turned off. Thank you for listening. Marisol Gonzalez. So did it go down the drain?
No. Madam President, may the list of sewer forgivenesses for the city... We didn't investigate all of them and find them all. We support all the sewer forgivenesses.
Your Honor, I move that we approve Mrs. Gonzalez's forgiveness of $281.93. Yeah, but her normal sewer charge would have been 34.
Right, so the high...
I say we forgive the part that is too big and she pays what she owes.
247.20.
No. Yeah, I understand, but see, this part of that is what is over. And this part of that is what she normally pays for the sewer.
That's that minus that, which is that.
I got you. I have to amend my motion, Your Honor, because she has a charge here, but see, and it's 247.20. I apologize. I was going the opposite direction. I was gone, but I'm back now.
Do we have a second?
My second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So in the body of her letter, she is talking about her water bill. So... But her grievance is for her total utility bill, so she wants the sewer forgiven. Because it never actually says that in the body of the letter. She talks about she wants forgiveness for water.
But do you have the whole fucking thing written right?
Yeah, the... Normally on the phone conversations we have with the customers is the water goes through the meter, so the council normally doesn't forgive that. But the sewer part is what the customers are told that they can request the forgiveness for. So that is the calculations up top is only for the sewer charge.
Okay. It just doesn't say anything about that in the body of her letter.
Yeah, the 240 stuff. So all in favor, say aye. All those opposed, same sign. I'll go ahead and read the letters from the next four. And then we can maybe approve them all instead of since you already reviewed them all. Okay, so for this next one. Attention Newcastle Council, this is Felicia Dells from 3201 Cactus Drive, Newcastle. I left Newcastle on November 19th and won't be back till the middle of March. My daughter Tammy McFarland called me at the end of December and my water heater went out and water was running on the ground. Her...
PJ.
And PJ.
Okay. Shut water into the house off at that point and drained off what was still in the tank. I will be having water heater replaced this month, but I'm asking to at least have sewer part of the bill cut down since no water at all within the sewer. So the forgiveness on Felicia would be $165.61. And then the next one. Tuesday, January 29th, my landlord was taking a dryer out of my house to replace it and he noticed that I had a water leak under the house. We were not aware of this leak as we maintained water pressure and there was nothing indicating that there was a leak. I'm writing in hopes of getting sewer forgiveness. I am a single mom and have limited resources. This leak caused a huge jump in my bill and I maintain a very tight budget. Your consideration would be very appreciated. Abigail Bach of 803 Wood Street. And her forgiveness that she's asking for is $105. The next one is from Steve Bowe. Water bill, 1 and 2 of 24. And on 1/29/24, I was advised by Becky, City of Newcastle, that my water meter reading was extremely high on 1/30/24. A plumber from Black Hills Plumbing checked and found an elbow fitting had froze and broke in one of my water lines. He advised that he had to put down plastic sheeting as the ground under the house was very muddy and that the water was running out of the insulation on the underside of the pipe, onto the ground rather than into the sewer pipe. And any adjustment to sewer billing, payment plan schedule would be very helpful as I am on a fixed disability income. Thank you. The forgiveness for Steve Bowe is for $581.69. The next one is from Jacinta Donini.
Jacinta Donini.
To Campbell County City Council. This is in regards to our bill dated 1/30/24. Both the water and sewer amount were more than doubled on this bill. The total amount for this bill is $302.33. The last bill we received, the total amount was only $69.19. We are aware that there was a water leak that we found after the pipes had been frozen for over a week. The pipes were frozen from January 13th to January 22nd, 10 days. The water had been turned off since January 24th. I would like to ask for sewer forgiveness for both January and February. The water leak had nothing to do with the sewer. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. And the forgiveness for Donini is $132.
I move that we approve all of the sewer forgiveness requests. Any amount that the clerk provided to reflect the forgiveness.
There you go, motion and second. Any further discussion?
It's been really cold this winter and it's hot on the folks. So, you know, it didn't go in the sewer, so I think that it's good that we're forgiving their sewer bill.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, moving on to citizens business. Virgo, Campbell County EMS on updates.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shane Kirsch. I'm EMS manager for Campbell County Health EMS and Wyoming Regional EMS. I just want to give you guys a little bit of a year in review update for call volumes for Campbell County Health EMS here in Newcastle and discuss some options for some sustainable EMS services to be provided for your town. Okay. So approximately through calendar year 2023, Campbell County Health EMS and Wyoming Regional EMS ran a total of 10,225 total EMS calls in the entire system. So that's all of Weston County, all of Campbell County, all of Sheridan County. From that, we generated 633 calls in Weston County. Approximately 433 of those were generated from the city and 200 of those were generated from the county. We facilitated 438 transports out of that 633, with 100 of those being out-of-town transfers from Weston County Health Services. From those 100 out-of-town transfers, we did have 114 requests for service from Weston County Health Services for inter-facility transfers. We did have to delay five of those due to multiple factors. It could have been we had other EMS calls going on at the same time, other inter-facility transfers going on at the same time. And we did have to decline 14 of those. So unfortunately, sometimes that just happens. They look for other options such as flight transfers as well and we got to facilitate the ground transfers. In the past year, we did have 16 flights and four cardiac arrests in Weston County. We continue to have difficulties in finding staffing for Weston County and the City of Newcastle. We were able to onboard about 26 staff in the last year to facilitate growth in Sheridan and Campbell County. However, I've received no applications for our Newcastle requisition. We have participated in several job fairs. We've geo-fenced social media ads. We've put ads in the Newcastle paper. And we are still struggling to find active applications for Newcastle EMS. We did have two students that were willing to go through an EMT class. One of them was located in Newcastle. However, they unfortunately did not finish the class. And then we do have one that's located in Upton, but I've yet to see an application from them. I don't... They should have completed their state testing last weekend. So hopefully they will choose to participate in EMS somewhere in Weston County. I don't know if it's going to be Upton VFD or hopefully not, but Campbell County Health EMS. Currently have three vehicles in service here at the Newcastle base. A couple of the other things that we did want to talk about, forcing sustainability options with EMS. The second page that I put in front of you guys is sent to file 43. And it is something that I'm also going to present to the Weston County Commissioners on the 20th about an EMS taxing district. So right now, I believe you guys utilize a general fund appropriation to pay for the subsidy for Campbell County Health to operate in Weston County. This is an option for an EMS taxing district. I believe you can levy up to four mils. Two mils is your initial and then you have the option of another two mils to levy against the taxpayers, which I believe Chris did the math on that, was right around $400,000 annually if you were to tax the full four mils, which is quite a bit more than what we're currently receiving. It could offset your general fund appropriation by quite a bit. An increase, hopefully a more sustainable option for EMS services here. So just wanted to bring that to you guys' attention. The other thing that I will be bringing up to the Weston County Commissioners that I talked to the Upton Town Council about back in October and then again in January. I brought up the idea of doing an assessment of EMS services. The Wyoming Department of Health EMS Office has partnered with a couple of different services that do assessments of EMS services for different counties. They... This is a pretty big corporation that does this. They've done the state of Alaska and the state of South Dakota. They've done three or four different counties in Wyoming. And there are grant opportunities here as well to kind of offset the cost of that EMS assessment. But what this company will come in, they'll take a look at call volumes. They'll take a look at services that are available here and give you guys a better idea of what a sustainable EMS service looks like here versus what both myself and Chris Belton and my team would give you. It might be the same answers what we're currently providing. It might be less, it might be more. But then again, you're getting somebody that's not invested into the community and giving you that third-party opinion. I believe that we looked into that and that cost is going to be around $40,000. I believe the application for the grant process to offset that cost starts in April. So like I said, I will be presenting the same information to the Weston County Commissioners. The town of Upton's also been kind of involved with this as well as they were really struggling in Upton to find a sustainable EMS service over there. And then the last thing that I wanted to bring forward was whether or not the town would be willing to perhaps open up like a housing second for EMS providers in Newcastle. Again, looking for creative ways to entice EMS providers to live and work in Newcastle. And the reason we brought this up is that several years ago, the town of Wright also had a housing subsidy for paramedics willing to live and work in Wright, Wyoming and then be available on their days off, which historically has been an issue for Campbell County Health EMS. I am more than happy to pay two people to be here 24/7/365. However, it's the multiple calls that we generate here that tend to be the issue as far as trying to provide a fast service. So having that housing second might entice some people to move to the community. And so just wanted to bring that up for discussion if there would be an option.
So all of this stuff came up at the workshop that we had in Upton. That was in October, wasn't it? Yeah. I mean, personally, I thought, you know, everybody was trying to think out of the box. And I thought some of it, you know, it was good ideas. I'm glad that you're following up on them. I think that it was kind of unpopular, given the amount of, you know, property taxes and the way taxes continue to climb, that some people may have thought that it was unfavorable to try to form some kind of a special district. But I don't know what the process is involved. But I kind of felt like it should be up to the voters in our county if they thought that, you know, if they found some kind of a special district to be favorable and they weren't, you know, opposed to paying a little bit more in taxes to make sure that they have better EMS coverage. It just kind of made sense to me. But, yeah, I don't know the exact process for trying to figure out if that would be favorable with voters in our county.
What was the Commissioner's statement that the Commissioner's put on the ballot?
Yep.
Okay.
And this is somewhat of an option that is utilized in Johnson County as well to offset some of their EMS costs. However, they're using a rural healthcare district, taxing district. So it's a little bit different than the EMS specific. But they generate, I believe, $800,000 a year. I think that number, yeah.
Isn't the EMS specific kind of a new thing?
Yes. It just passed legislation last year.
Yeah.
One thing we've been considering is you've probably heard that there's a proposed bill to cap property tax either at 3% or 5%. And we're just worried about what that would do to your guys' budget and/or the counties if property taxes were capped. And so that would make your general funds more restricted for emergency services, whether it's EMS or fire or home enforcement, but just what that impact would be. Certainly that bill hasn't gone through the legislative process yet. And I'm sure there'd be lots of amendments to it. But those are some of the things we're considering is, you know, what impact does a 3% or 5% cap on property tax have on general funds to then allocate towards services like ours? And certainly I know voters wouldn't want to cut taxes here and raise them over here, you know, with especially the EMS taxing district. But again, we're just trying to lay out options for you to consider, certainly the constituents to consider, you know, how you guys and constituents can help us ensure EMS services are viable here. We continue to operate right at that break-even point for us. And that's kind of obviously our bare minimum where we want to be. Certainly, we'd like to generate some revenue or profit so that we can afford capital, equipment purchases from cardiac monitors to ambulance replacement, things like that, even, you know, pay raises for employees as the market shifts up for them. And so again, we're just trying to be open and, you know, transparent with you on where we're at and what some options are that other communities are either currently using or are considering. I will say Shane and I and our CEO met with the CEO of Weston County Health Services just to talk about an idea of... So if the hospital here were to quote-unquote "take over ambulance services", we'll be responsible for ambulance services. What they can then do is because of the remoteness of their facility is they could actually apply with the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services to get what we call cost-based reimbursement. And it would just be for those Medicare and Medicaid patients. But instead of where we do now is we send out a bill and might get 50% of that or with our Medicare/Medicaid pair services, it's 38 cents on the dollar, is they actually provide the finances back to CMS and CMS reimburses. is they actually provide the finances back to CMS, and CMS reimburses basically about ninety percent. They call it a cost base, ninety percent of the cost for that service, which is a huge leap from where we're at now. And, and we proposed to him, you know, they could essentially take it over, but they would still contract with us or Long Beach only EMS or any vendor of their choice to provide that service. But at least there would be with those CMS patients, the option to capture cost-based reimbursement. The way our system is now, we can't do that. And so we just started those conversations with him last week. He actually met with their auditor, who the hospital just hired to come in and look at their finances, to say, hey, what does this look like from our end? And how could we make that work? Certainly that might relieve some of the financial pressures on us and you guys and as well as the county, but it's, it's in its.
Do you think we should meet with them too?
For them?
Do you think we should meet with them also? Or did you get a good comeback from them, or?
From the hospital or? Yeah, the hospital is definitely interested. Randy over there definitely wants to take a look at it. He met with his auditors to kind of get some more insight into it. I certainly think as things progress, certainly the city and the county should probably be in on those discussions with us on what does it look like? What's the financial benefit, if any, and then what would that do to the stipends you guys are providing us at this point?
Now, if we were to go to a district, that would guarantee more funds for the ambulance service, but it doesn't guarantee staff.
Correct.
So we got to keep that in mind as well.
Yeah.
We got to, I think, figure out a way to kind of help them more with retaining and getting staff.
That's been the issue like ever since you guys took over, right?
Yeah.
Because we need people in Newcastle to buy in and become employees of, of the ambulance service.
I think a lot of it was the change because of not being able to do volunteers.
Volunteers in the driver position is the big portion of it. And again, my, from my standpoint of managing the staffing model, offsetting the cost by having more funds available from an EMS taxing district would allow us to offset some of that staffing cost. So again, maybe I won't be able to employ people that live and work in Newcastle. They might be coming from other areas of the state, just like I have people coming from other areas of the state to work in Gillette. But I could potentially afford to bring another truck into the system over here in Weston County to help facilitate more interfacility transfers, and that better available for additional medical coverage. So again, trying to offset some of the costs that are incurred from additional staffing. When we look at staffing from our standpoint, to put two EMT basics on a truck, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, is right around five hundred thousand dollars a year. We bump that up to the paramedic level service with an EMT basic partner, that cost increases to about one point one billion. So we try to offset that with, you know, transporting additional patients and, you know, having favorable billing processes. However, being able to offset some of that cost with the stipend definitely makes it a more feasible option for us.
One of the things I was talking to Chris about when he first came in was maybe breaking down the calls, what's in city limits and what's out of city limits to show the commissioners, you know, that we're pretty close to the city calls for service and to maybe do a better job at splitting, which would maybe help them get a little bit more from both the county and city.
Yeah. Shane and I will be at the county commissioners Friday, November twenty-third or twenty, twentieth? Just to talk about that, those kind of statistics and data, and then also continuing on with the EMS workshop we had in Upton, you know, what from a county standpoint can we all do to ensure Upton is covered without sacrificing Newcastle's area, without sacrificing interfacility transfers. And that's one of the success story that I wanted to share is in, on July first of this year, we implemented a truck. It's just an additional truck that comes on in Gillette. It's on seven fifteen, seventeen hours a day. And we use that truck in the entire system, other than really, it doesn't go to Sheridan. But what we noticed, the big benefit here was that truck is able to come to Newcastle to either backfill this truck, goes on a transfer, or vice versa. It might take the transfer in the truck that's here stays. But really from July first on, the hospital has been very pleased with our ability to quickly get out, to get transferred out more quickly, and then also to be able to do more than the salary did just around a hundred this year. And I think last year we were in the seventy-ish. So we increased that by, you know, a few this year. And, and that makes us think, man, even though that truck is extra and then Gillette gets helped out here, and so how can we look at getting another truck on a somewhat permanent basis, you know, in Newcastle? We're very fortunate from Nub Baker to Jessica Lorenz to Positiv Kenny and Joseph Keones. They live here, and those guys will bend over backwards to do what they can when they're available. But sometimes over the heads off, you know, they're out of town or they're, they're working another job, say, at the hospital, and they're just not available to go. And so we do have one candidate that applied. We're making an offer to him. He has expressed interest in moving to Newcastle. So that may be a fifth person that lives here and works for our system. So it's helping, you know, but it just feels like we still have a ways to go. Like, I looked at Shane, I kind of laughed, and he talked about, you know, the lack of applicants for your boards. It's like, we're all experiencing the same issue, you know? It's just hard to get people to, to be in, so.
Well, I just want to say that I felt like the, the workshop in Upton was a, was a great workshop. And I felt really positive when I left there. But I guess what we really need to do is talk to the county commissioners and see about making it so that the, the people can, can vote and, and see if we can get, you know, the people to agree to the EMS district. Because, I mean, any revenue generated is a positive thing. And especially when we're talking about something important. I think that we have a lot of folks in our community that are elderly that would like the peace of mind, you know, and wouldn't mind paying a little bit extra to, to know that if they fall down or they have a problem, that there's going to be somebody there to, to help them.
Yeah. And to that point, that's one of the reasons we support that Safe Tech Solutions doing an assessment is, it's again, it's a third-party EMS expert consultant that comes in. And, and they may literally say, you guys need to do things totally different. And could involve us, could not involve us, but all of us together saying, here's what we as a third-party person, not, you know, any biases or really, let's change it, ties to a certain business model. They might say, here's what we recommend you do. And, and I think we did that in Gillette in two thousand and fifteen, and it really changed our whole system and our culture and how we do things. Several other EMS AUCs have done it in Wyoming. I, I feel it'd be beneficial here. The nice thing about it is that Grant Shane talked about is the state provides the majority of that funding. Like in our case, they paid forty thousand dollars and we paid fifteen thousand dollars to have that assessment done. And so I, I would assume between the city and the county and whatever other agency might want to participate, we could come up with that, you know, say fifteen thousand. The state already has the rest of the money there. And they might open our eyes to a lot of different ways of doing things. But they may come back and say, you're doing exactly what you should do and you need to focus on staffing, you know, what we don't know. But I think it'd be worth that look from those guys coming in and telling us they just finished the state of South Dakota, so they do have a lot of experience in their region.
We appreciate everything you're saying.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Continued partnership.
I do want to remind the council of our monthly meetings that we have with Weston County Health Services. I know Pam's attended at least one of those meetings. We have another one tomorrow at one o'clock. You guys should have an email invite.
I, I do send it to Pam and the commission chair, because I don't have everyone's email addresses. And so if you want that invite, Pam reported to you. I believe I really included you after the October workshop. I think you're on those invites, but if not, I can email it to anybody, so.
So if you guys are interested in attending any of those, basically just come together. Once a month, we discuss what's going well, what's not going well, current staffing problems, if there are any, any equipment problems, and, you know, just again, trying to find good ways to work with people for a sustainable EMS service.
What is that meeting tomorrow, what was it?
Tomorrow at one o'clock at Weston County Health Services.
Down in the basement?
Uh, we've met in the boardroom once or twice.
Just a friend?
Yeah. It's totally up to them.
I must say, preferably, we, we prefer you don't have a call in there, so it doesn't have to be an advertised and public meeting. So if you guys will just keep that in mind, it's not that anything's a secret. You just prefer to be able to meet and change the schedule. We have to change it based on people's and abilities, so.
And the last thing that I have for everyone is just an announcement of our twenty-fifth anniversary for EMS University this year. Wanted to leave this with you. We're going to get a flyer out to Newcastle, along with your fire department as well, in case anybody's interested in attending, or if you're interested in being a sponsor or a donor to the event. All the information is here in this little packet, so I'll leave that behind.
One last thing, if I still have time, sorry. We, I think, talked to you for almost two years now about the EMS regionalization grant. That grant, we did receive a grant letter in October of two thousand and twenty-two. It went through the state budget office. We had some requests for additional, additional information. We submitted all that. It did get approved by the state budget office, and it's in the governor's office. It's been there since about October. We're still waiting to hear from the governor's office on whether we're finally approved or declining. That grant is all other funds that were passed down from the feds down to the state of Wyoming. It's probably two hundred and eighty-some million that the state of Wyoming got. There is chatter from the AG's office that some of that two hundred fifty or two hundred and eighty million dollars, they don't believe meets the COVID requirements that the fed set out and/or they're worried that some of the money won't be able to be obligated and spent by the timelines of the grant. They haven't told us no on our grant. We still feel pretty good that we'll get those funds. But again, we haven't yet. And that has set us back on a lot of the training that we'd be able to provide in the five-county region of Wyoming, the EMT classes, the ongoing training, a lot of the equipments, purchases, ambulances. And so we, we're anticipating three point eight million dollars if our whole grant is awarded, which will again help us with a lot of the asks that we've had of you guys in the past. So fingers crossed, we'll be able to hear from the governor's office on that, so. I think that's it.
I have a question. Um, your EMT classes, you pretty much specifically exclusively hold those in Gillette?
There are. Yes, there are virtual attendance that you can do for some of the classes. However, I believe the last course coordinator said that most of the students had to meet, probably forty percent of them in-person, because so much of them required hands-on skills.
So looking at the staffing, could that be a consideration? They maybe host one here, see what kind of, what it generates?
Yeah, so we did that with the last class. We looked at the amount of applicants and what, like Shane said, we found two from Weston County and the rest in Gillette. It made more sense to, to host the in-person portions of those classes in Gillette. Everyone attends virtually two nights a week, but the in-person stuff is held in Gillette. If we were to get a decent amount of students here, we may still do the virtual portion, but then host skills in Gillette and then also in Newcastle. But we're just, we kind of need the numbers to justify doing it two separate.
There is also a paramedic that works for Sundance EMS who lives in Upton, who is trying to get a, an EMT class together in Upton. However, she is not an approved course coordinator. She's working through a quite a lot of hurdles with the state. One of my staff members is actually actively working with her on trying to get this class off the ground. So we, that could also be an option too. I'd be happy to help advertise.
Sure.
As a class in Upton.
Yeah, just trying to think outside the box, you know, to where these folks don't like to drive all the way to Gillette for the class, you know, if they have other jobs and whatnot, where they could stay here and.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right.
The nice thing is all of the didactic is online. So that's ninety percent of the class is online. But certainly, if we had a couple of folks that lived here, you know, five folks, whatever it is, then we could work on setting there's in-class stuff, or in-person stuff that could be here.
Okay. Could we take that even a step further if we're thinking outside the box? And maybe like, we have some communities in between the two, right? So maybe ask the folks in Warcraft if you can have some space there. So then you're kind of splitting some of the mileage up.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah. Unfortunately, Vera Anus-Drake actually works for us, so very close partnership.
It's all EMS community in Wyoming, so. Yeah, I'm sure he'd be more than willing to, to host a class at their EMS course, so. Yeah, we just need the, the applicants to apply. Thank you guys for your time enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure was a swing vote, right? She's very powerful. What's your, you know, that, you could talk about the chairmanship and everything else. It still comes down to you need three votes to win stuff. Do you think Vera enjoys that, or do you think it's just she accepts that's the job? And, and she's taking it on herself to go ahead and be that person?
I think she, from what I gather from watching the meetings, I haven't been to a meeting in person in a long time. But from watching them and listening to it, I think she accepts that role. Obviously, I can't speak for her, but I, I don't know how much I would enjoy being that person. I think it's a hard job, and I think you're in a hard place, especially when you have to sit between those two groups of men every meeting and be that person in the middle, which I, I think she might be in the middle all of the way. I think she might sit between them too.
Yeah, a lot of fur flies around Vera and.
Um, moving on to Mayor and Council member reports. Number one, Black Hills Energy. Great stuff, and I met with Black Hills one week ago, two weeks ago, in regards to the franchise that we have with them. And we're up for renewal in August. And so I had Stacy email this out to everybody to take a look at, so we can kind of go over it. Black Hills will be here at six o'clock at our next meeting on the twentieth to do a presentation before our meeting for us to have everything we need to go ahead and approve this or make any more changes before we make an approval. Because it is an ordinance, so it'll have to have three readings. So did everybody have a chance to read this over? Okay. Did anybody see anything that stood out to them, that you dealt with?
I don't know if I have this word in mind. Either way, we'll have time to look at it and be able to bring it up. Any concerns on the twentieth?
Um, is there anything you wanted to add that we talked with them about?
Uh, Mayor, not that I can think of. I mean, the top operations and functions of that nature. But I do recall they were going to send us a hard copy. We, franchise agreement.
And I haven't seen it.
I haven't seen it.
So we just have.
They write up the franchise agreement?
We asked them to go and draft one.
And did, did you ask them to raise the three percent to five?
I think that's your job.
Just, just curious, we, we've been at three percent for, I've noticed, oh, well, since nineteen ninety-five.
Well, that's one of the things that we can look at when they, when they're here and we're discussing it in person.
Okay.
We just asked them to get a draft agreement for us, so we had a current one.
And this goes for how many years?
I believe twenty.
Twenty.
Unless the council would like to make it less. The last one was in nineteen ninety-five.
So there'll be some changes for sure, but.
Some statutes, the side on franchises is being ten years maximum, so. The electrical one, they do differentiate on gas and communications, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Well, Black Hills Energy has turned into a conglomerate of all of the stuff. So I mean, they have gas, they have energy, they're kind of the guys around here, I don't know. If we didn't go with them, whether we get our gas or our power.
If, if I may, Kalvin, no error, this is just strictly for the electrical.
This is specific for electric?
Yeah, there is a separate agreement for the gas.
Yes.
So that's not even going to be, this is, this is just expiring after thirty years, right?
So they'll be coming to speak with us. And so remember, six o'clock on the twentieth, they're going to do the presentation before our meeting.
Yeah, Clerk Haggerty sent out a calendar invite, and I got it on there. So I won't show up and sit in here for an hour before the meeting starts.
Give you a chance to prove you're good.
The other thing I wanted to add on our next meeting, I invited, what do they have? West End County. End County generation, something? There's a young, there's two young girls in our community that have started a coalition for basically helping the youth be taught things that they may not have been taught either in school or at home. So, I met with them today. I think it's, they have a really good idea, there's a lot of things that I've noticed, being a, a business owner, getting applications and things of that factor, our kids aren't taught. So, they're gonna come in and do a presentation. They are becoming a 501(c)(3), they're gonna have an office here in town, and it's a really good, it's a great idea, for getting kids prepared to go to school and the real world, and what, what kind of things they could do if they're not able to go to college. They have some great ideas, so I did have some come in, speak at our next meeting.
First lesson, how to put down your phone and turn it off.
How to, how to print your name, sign your names, yeah. So, just wanted to give you guys heads up that we'll have that presentation too during our meeting. I'm pretty excited for that. Anyway, moving on, any, no old business?
Yeah, there's old business. Well, we never thought that the fraud, that's a bathroom that they were delivering.
That will be under his reports?
Well, it doesn't say so.
It should be under, did you, like, for that, you want me to...
Is it all ready for bringing up a, a concern shortly under Mayor Councilmember's report? So, anyway, I was just thinking about this today, we have, the standing committee reports portion of our meeting happens after the department head reports, but usually the committees have things that they want to make, you know, suggestions on, or they want the rest of the council to back, that maybe should take place before the council, or the department head reports, because sometimes those topics are covered in the department head reports before the committee has a chance to bring that, that up to the council. So, I asked Attorney Hughes about that prior to the meeting, and he said that he's gonna look at the statutes involved, because sometimes the, or the agendas follow the statute. So, anyway, it's just a, something that I think would make our meetings run a little less clunky, if the, the committee was allowed to make a report prior to the, the department head reporting.
I think if there's a standing committee report that falls under, say, Supervisor Stumpf's thing, it should be done with your report, don't you think? Like, if you guys met, I mean, I don't...
I would, Madam Mayor, forgive it, certainly the council and, and the statute wouldn't have to be done. I, I can see where Councilman Owens's recommendation would be beneficial, that way you have a standing committee report, and then when I ask for, like I'm doing tonight, the emergency resolution, you understand what it's for.
I see.
That's all I've got. Thanks for having me.
Going back to the bathroom, I swear I got so rudely interrupted.
Oh, sorry.
It's old business, and, and, and it's not listed under Attorney Hughes's, he's got lease and franchise agreements to make.
Well, at our last meeting, it was, wasn't it set for the 23rd at like 10 o'clock or something?
I believe it's the 23rd or the 24th, I have it on my calendar. But, at the last meeting, we asked if Stacy Hagerty and Greg Stumpf could be available for testifying if the need arises. But, the date and the time is, I believe it's February 24th at 10:30 a.m.
Really?
I don't know if it's a January 24th.
I have it down as the 27th.
27th.
Oh, we're close. But, yeah, we discussed it last month, so we can't really do anything until they have that.
Or 27:30.
At 10 o'clock.
Judge won't let me do anything until I see him.
Damn.
I know.
So, if we're, if we're all gonna be present, because I know there's a couple that wanted to be there, we definitely need to make arrangements, so, because it will be a quorum if we have multiple, so we'll have to...
I would.
Okay. Because I think we might as well let the paper know that there's a possibility of a quorum for that. So, okay. All right, moving on.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Paul Buzes? Greg, the monument for the Bright Delight thing up there, wanted to find out on that, I've been asked several times. Madam Mayor, Councilman Buss, I cannot find anything statutory that would bind us to not allowing it, but I would request that we tread carefully on putting anything in the parks, not park-related.
I thought we had done the land that's donated, or something, don't we, by the way?
And I cannot find any agreement that we have to bound by to require that we would not allow or would allow. I cannot find anything for or against it. Like I said, I, I would advise the council to tread carefully by adding stuff into the parks, because this could open a box, an opportunity for all kinds of stuff, not necessarily just political, but we've always tried to keep banners and things like that out of the parks as much as possible. And this would be similar to that. Everything we have in the parks right now is park-related. The flower box at Dow Park was donated, but it's a flower box and has Dow Park written on the side of it, nothing else. That sort of stuff we've allowed in the past. So, it's, it's a council decision, sort of thing.
And then, Mr. Buss, that's something we still have to make a decision on, about that?
It was tabled several meetings.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
I think we were looking to see, because, I think out of common courtesy, we talked with the bank since they donated that, didn't they donate that? Am I mistaken?
I, they, I'm not sure exactly how much they own, but they had a significant amount of them. I know they purchased materials, or some of the materials, most of the materials I can get, and we provided to the lender, I'm not sure who had the land originally. Townsend, I think. Might have been.
Madam Mayor, I have one more thing, and I don't, I just, have, have we started doing something with deer?
Yeah, it's actually kind of concluded for the year, as far as, or, not for the year, did you guys do some calling after?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Colley, we actually were shooting, getting rid of 37 deer, told one had heart wasting disease, but because the warmer temperatures are, the place we were storing them, we can no longer keep them cold enough. We, our, the inside of the box is getting up to 40 degrees, 50 degrees during the day. We gotta postpone anything like that until we can, till it turns colder. Now, we're at the point that they're actually pregnant, and things do get, it brings a different aspect to it. Our plan moving forward, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, we're gonna do a count next fall, and then we have the permit renewed for this year, so we're gonna do a count next fall, and readjust the numbers if we need to, and continue on next summer, or next fall, after that season. We, we can take up to an additional 41 this year under the permit. I wish we could, we just can't find a place that is deal safe. We're trying to keep those boards just where they need to be.
So, and I can't remember, oh, but somebody just said the other day that there was one injured, and it's not bad, it's, but it's, kind of, has anybody seen it?
Where's this at?
Oh, I don't know.
Is it over by the four-way stop in there?
Might be.
Okay. I think Genuage might have taken care of it.
In, in the process of doing this, we actually found several deer with injuries of some sort, broken legs or swollen sections.
This one's walking on two legs next to us.
So, it's a, it's a common problem.
Thank you. Any other old business? Okay, moving on to department head reports, Public Works Supervisor Greg Stumpf.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My first item, my main item, we have an opportunity for, if I may, if possible, funding for one of our next projects, be the 2025 improvements project. The project total is just short of 2.1 million dollars. I was informed of possibility of MRG money, mineral royalty grant monies available. The application deadline is this Friday. We cannot apply without a resolution to apply for, to move forward with the funding. I'm not saying we will or we will not get the funding, or apply for it, but to move forward, we needed a resolution, so I recommend the council to throw down Resolution 1 of 24, and allow the mayor to sign it, and myself to represent the city.
This is an example of what the, the, I believe my fellow committee members were in favor of making the recommendations of the council for the, for, for us to pass this resolution, so that we can try to get that MRG money. But, this is, this is an example of why I think the standing committee report should be ahead of, of the department head reports. But, anyway, um...
So, you recommend...
So, I, I make a motion that we, we pass Resolution Number...
One.
One of 20, one of 2024.
One of 2024, so that we can seek the mineral royalty grants.
I second it.
Motion is second, any further discussion?
No, I think it's great that Greg's been out there looking for money for the city, and finding creative ways to get us funded for our infrastructure project.
Oh, it's beautiful. Now, this one, dude, this has the 25% possible forgiveness?
This is just, this is a different funding source, this is mineral royalty money. This money comes from within the state. If, there's a small pot of money, there's around 5 million left over, they're trying to get out the door for clean water projects. One thing...
Trying to get rid of it.
What's that?
They're just trying to...
If they're willing to give it, I'm willing to date it.
Well, yeah.
With this money, considering maybe you want clean water projects, that's your primary goal. So, I'm not saying we will get it, I'm not saying we won't.
So, the date is January 31st, so we'll have to come on that date for tonight's date.
My apologies.
Okay.
Sorry for that.
But, just so everyone's aware, Resolution Number 1, 2024, is entitled a resolution authorizing submission of the Federal Mineral Royalty Capital Construction Account Grant, application to the State Law and Investment Board on behalf of the governing body for the City of Newcastle, for the purpose of water and sewer replacement. So, once it's, it's gonna be amended to February 5th, correct? Okay, so once it's amended, then we should have no issues, so, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. So, when you get the, get redated, all...
So, why don't we just do a million instead of the two?
So, if we can get the million, then we can, I mean, there's a point to ask for...
No, that is, Madam Mayor, Councilman Colley, if I can, that's one of the questions they have on the application, if you cannot receive the full funding you're asking for, what would be choosing for suitable?
Anything.
I understand, so...
Anything.
That's one of the, we, I started filling out the application, but there are some questions, that I'll probably be emailing to the bar committee, and I'll give that to the council, and some decisions need to be made, that, I'm not sure I'm up to doing it without counsel, some sort of counsel position, so. The next item I have, Seventh Avenue Improvements Project, this year in the summer. We ordered the grant, we have the grant, or we have the agreement back, the contract agreement with the contractor, and I would request the council allow Mayor Delker to sign the agreements, review all the agreements, everything seems to be all right.
I move that we approve the agreement for the Seventh Avenue project, and move it to the mayor for signature.
Sir.
You have a motion in second, any further discussion?
I'm glad we're getting some work done, Greg.
It's good working on it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Next item would be, I'd like to call it sanitation committee meeting, to discuss a purchase of a new garbage truck. We replace our garbage truck every 10 years, we're at year eight. If I ordered one today, it would be 380 days before it showed up, so in order to purchase the truck in the next fiscal year, 20, before 25 fiscal year, we would need to actually get this in bit out prior to the end of this fiscal year, to keep it within the timeframe. Committee, sanitation committees, Councilman Downs, Councilman Buss, and Councilman Owens. It's all right, I can email out a few invites or a few days might work, and we can go from there, that'd be sufficient.
Sounds good to me, Greg.
Because I'm tired of having to work in garbage trucks. I'd like to call up the personnel committee as well, to discuss some personnel issues, one of them's the city engineer's position, we have documentation done for that one. That is, Councilman Downs, Councilman Colley, Councilman Stevenson.
We'll be in town next week, Al.
Next week, okay. The only other thing I have, and we did have 23 calls for frozen water lines over that trees, so, and I have one of the meters in, inside of houses, the rest of them were all on the customer side, so. We only have one meter left that we should have to deal with, so. Other than that, are there any questions, is there any reports?
We got any reporting?
Yes, we did, they did deliver our reloader last Wednesday, so we have taken possession of that, awaiting the invoice and stuff. We'll put it into service, I'm guessing, next week, so.
Yay. So, Public Works Supervisor Stumpf, there's these grants out there called community facility grants, they can be used to buy different things, like fire apparatus, they can be used on buildings. I, I don't imagine that you couldn't probably use one on, on a garbage truck. So, anyway, I'll, I'll do a little bit of research prior to the committee meeting, and see if, if there's any, anything available.
That would be great. We have been talking with DQ since we are closing our landfill, we do have, they do have cease and transfer money, that they did off, offer something to help us purchase our next truck. Put it in call to Craig, who called me, with the Q to discuss what that funding would look like, how much it would be, so. Right now, downsized our truck two sizes, would say it's around 16,000 pounds, but it's still $400,000 estimated cost. Wow.
Speaking of landfills, they're getting closer to the counties, they're gonna be running power here soon.
Yeah, I was supposed to attend their last meeting, but they ended up going to show you instead, so I, I haven't had a chance to discuss them. I am planning on going to the next meeting, so we can find out a little more, we've got some other stuff we need to discuss.
And they're gonna be running the power soon, and the buildings, and should be hopefully six months?
Yeah. I hope so.
Greg, you had a meeting with Dr. Jordan and Lucille Dumber about that wall? Greg, you had a meeting with Dr. Jordan and Lucille Dumber about that wall?
Correct.
And did anything ever come to fruition from that meeting?
Not yet. Um, I've been looking for grants, it's all fairly minimal right now that I've found. I thought I had a run on one that would have paid half the wall, half the wall cost, but, um, we're still looking for funding, so.
Thank you. Any other questions for? Moving on to please Chief Derek Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I have the calls for service. Since January seventeenth of this year, Newcastle Police Department appealed two hundred and ten calls. Weston County Sheriff's Office, ninety calls. Upton Police Department, forty-one calls. Newcastle Volunteer Fire Department, fourteen calls. Weston County Fire Protection District, thirty-eight calls. And I was curious about that number, so I looked, all but four of those were, they're just people reporting controlled burns. Uh, so that, that call goes under their, their list. And then Upton Volunteer Fire Department had one call. Newcastle Ambulance had thirty-three calls and Upton Ambulance, zero. Questions about that? Requests approval of the council to promote Nicholas Kaminsky to the effective immediately, I guess. To be raised to a pay rate of twenty-nine forty-two an hour, with having nine years of service, being a firearms instructor, field training officer. Nick's done a really good job for us, he's very familiar with the statutes of Wyoming and he's, uh, very thorough in his work, very efficient in what he does. I, I think he would be a good fit for this position. We need a intermediate level supervisor to take on some duties that are just drowning me currently and help with some supervision of staff and getting some things done. So I would ask, ask that I be able to promote, uh, Officer Kaminsky to the rank of sergeant.
You know, I move that we appoint Officer Nicholas Kaminsky to the rank of sergeant and approve his pay raise as quoted by the chief.
Effective?
Immediately.
Today's date?
Yeah.
Okay.
That will look.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion in second, any further discussion?
It'll be good that you'll be able to get some help with some of those duties, huh?
Very good. It's been, it's been tough.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Thank you, very much appreciate that. Uh, the next item on my list, I would request permission to sell our old firearms, they're outdated. Uh, not real safe to be in service anymore. We can get, have the numbers here. So, Mayor. And, and what we would do, we have a, a bid from Proforce Law Enforcement, they're, uh, they have an F F L, so we can sell the gun, trade back to them very seamlessly. And that's who we purchased our new firearms from. We would be trading eleven Glock Model twenty-twos for two hundred and twenty-five dollars a piece. We're not trading, but selling. Uh, one Glock Model twenty-three for two hundred and twenty-five dollars and two Glock twenty-sevens for, uh, two hundred and sixty dollars. And, uh, so that's a total of three thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. And what they're able to do instead of exchanging money and all of that, is they're able to give us an in-store credit essentially in store. Obviously, we can't drive to the Proforce store, but we can order, order anything that we would need, so we would use that to replace some ammunition and do some other, give us a little bit of money to buy firearms related stuff that we don't have in the budget right now. So we would be able to, um, like I said, buy some more ammunition and, and get some other things that we've kind of been in need of. So I would ask your approval for that and, I guess, let me add this first. We also have, so we changed calibers of handguns, so we now have nine millimeters, we used to have forty caliber handguns. We have, um, approximately twenty-five hundred rounds of lead core, forty caliber ammunition and a thousand, uh, okay, twenty-five hundred rounds to a, um, we've, we've talked to Moorcroft P D, we can't just sell this to anybody, I don't think, under the new firearms laws. So we're, we're talking to other law enforcement agencies and, uh, we talked to Moorcroft P D and, and we were gonna pitch them the price of a thousand dollars for that twenty-five hundred rounds of ammunition. We can trade it to Proforce, but they can only offer us six hundred dollars for it and you gotta pay to ship it to them. So by the time you ship it to them, you, you gave them twenty-five hundred dollars or twenty-five hundred rounds and you're gonna get about three or four hundred dollars out of it because the shipping costs are very expensive to you because it's so heavy. So in essence, I, I would like the approval to trade or sell our, uh, outplayed firearms ammunition.
You have a motion?
I move that we, uh, proceed with selling the outdated firearms and ammunition, trade or sell.
Two second, two motion in second, any further discussion?
I'd like to talk about, this is Newcastle, Wyoming, and these people love guns. What if we had an auction? What if we, you know, and a pizza party?
We can't do that.
You can't do that?
I, I don't know. I, I honestly don't know what the, the latest federal, uh, laws are on selling firearms. I know that this would be a more seamless way of doing that, but I, I also don't know what a worn-out Glock twenty-two is really worth. We're giving a fair price for it. So that might require some precision to figure out what we could have done.
I just, I just thought these people would be willing to pay a little more than two twenty-five for a pistol.
And they may well be, um, I guess.
We don't.
Yeah, and I don't know how you do a background check or something like that.
You guys.
You'd have to go through a dealer, like Matt Ramsey or somebody, though.
Have to do it through an F F L, yeah. And I, I'm not familiar with all the, the rules and laws of the law, I, I know we can safely sell them to Proforce.
We can have the auction and the pizza party, at the same time we have the grand opening for the new police department. You get all that excitement.
I mean, is this something that we should move to table so that we can figure out if there's a, a better way to do it or a way to generate more revenue? Or do we just let the chief go ahead and get his in-store credits so we can get the things he needs?
Well, I'm worried.
And get rid of the animal, I mean, and then we're helping our neighbor out.
The mayor says she doesn't want the liability and I'm the only one that's disturbing the case here, so I just shut up.
Depending on if you might have to pay an F F L license dealer to handle all the paperwork, do all the background checks before you can, because a handgun is gonna be a different thing.
I'm thinking we could get another hundred dollars a piece out of them.
Well, it could.
If we sold them on auction, councilman Lutz.
Do you like a local auction of some sort?
I mean, there's all kinds of auction houses in the hills that sell firearms on the regular, um, but, I mean, I, I don't know how fast any of that's gonna happen, so how soon do you need?
It doesn't need to happen overnight, by eight weeks. It was just, this was a, a simple way of taking care of it and didn't require me investing a bunch of time into figuring out the process. Cause I've done this before when I worked for Johnson County and it was, it was even still kind of a pain there, but not, not a huge deal, so.
Well, I mean, you know, um, heavy burdens require many hands, right? So, I mean, um, I'm sure that our attorney could look into the legalities of some of this and maybe you wouldn't have to look too hard.
Yeah, and, and it might be as simple as a call to even say Badlands Armory or something like that, or local F F L could explain to you if you were to run that through them, they would charge you X amount per, per buyer for the background and all that type of stuff. So it might not be that hard to figure out, because those guys have to be relatively well versed in the, in federal laws regarding the sales of firearms, I would imagine, so you can probably.
Yeah, I mean, I bought some firearms from them, so I think they know what they're doing.
It, it's worth making a phone call, I would say.
We'll table it, we'll table it for the next meeting, okay?
Next item on my list, I wanted to give you an update on the K nine program. Uh, we have actually made the purchase of the K nine Buster. I guess he was named Buster because that's busting people for drugs. And, uh, we're currently working on a contract with the Peace Officers Association, so we have a, uh, a plan moving forward and we're, we're going to answer to them to a certain degree as far as, uh, making sure that the K nine is being used appropriately and, uh, being used as it should be, not just a pet, uh, which is a concern that they had and a legitimate one at that. So we're, we're working on a contract right now and I, I might ask Upton to review that before we get too carried away with putting, putting ink on it, but, uh, but at any rate, he's been purchased and the plan is to, uh, send Officer Moran and Buster to training starting in early May. Probably be out of training in the middle of June, so we won't see him in the school until next fall. Uh, got pushed out a little bit further than they originally anticipated, uh, but that's where we're at on that one.
Where do they go for training?
Gillette, yep, and it's six weeks. Any other questions? And then the last thing I have for you is I wanted to do a little PowerPoint presentation and, uh, have somebody here with me this evening that's gonna help me present this and, and help me explain things. On, on a position that I would like to propose. It would be a combination of an administrative assistant and an advocacy program that I kind of briefed you guys on last time around. Uh, this is a little bit of a, I guess unconventional way of pitching this idea. The person that's gonna help me pitch this is also gonna apply for the job. I guess unconventional situations go for unconventional methods, so that's how we're gonna do it. So that, let's, I'll hook up my computer here real quick and I'd like to introduce Jewel Parrish. She is the one that approached me, uh, with part of this idea, we put our heads together and we're gonna show you what we came up with.
Does that help?
Well, it sure does.
Has it swept Derek?
Yeah, lady back there.
Do me a favor.
If you feel free to move so you can see.
I can see.
Come on, Bill, if you can, so here with me.
Jewel, are you new to our community?
I am. So I just moved here in December. Um, I lived in Montana for about nine years. Um, prior to that, I lived in California, don't judge me for that. Uh, I worked on a, I, I know, I worked on a military base, so it wasn't really in California. I lived and worked on the base, so that doesn't count, right? And I've never moved back, ever. So that's a little bit of where I am, but I am new to the community here. So I approached Derek when I moved here because in Montana, I was a director of a victim services and a child advocacy center in a very rural parts of Montana. Um, it's a program that I developed and it just kind of grew and family brought me to Wyoming and that's why I'm here. And I believe, I'm for community, I'm a hundred percent whatever's better for the community, I'm here. And I didn't want to give up my work, so I approached Derek to find out, how do I get involved? Is this something I can continue doing when I'm here? Um, so that's a little bit about my job in Montana. Um, it was, if you know where Canada and North Dakota meet, back corner of Montana, very rural, better get there. So this position kind of melding with what Derek needed, he needs office work. So I do have some experience, now this isn't me applying for the job right now, but I do have experience in office management. I completely understand that this job has to be posted, I have to interview and I have to get the job. Um, I'm here, I told Derek, if somebody comes along that's better than I am, hire them, that's what's meant to be. Um, so office manager helped him with the day-to-day, little things in the office to lighten his load. Um, another one is I'm trained in a lot of community outreach and those are a lot of licenses that I carry with myself and certifications. Whether it's community in schools, um, I've done a lot of business helping connect businesses, how can they help us, where can we help their? Grant management, I had to write a lot of different grants. So I have, um, experience doing community grants at the, you know, community level with local banks, other businesses. I've done more of the state pass-through federal grants, um, I broke those and then I actually managed federal direct grants as well. So I saw that as a great opportunity to help Derek bring in money, cause it's hard. And there's a lot of grants, like one of the grants I was telling Derek about is replace radios. There's a whole bunch of money out there for that. Outfit the, the inside of vehicles where they have onboard computers where they can do the work right from there, get instant updates from those computers. Uh, there's ones for vests, there's ones for uniforms, like, there's so many that, and those are the ones that I've directly already helped with. Um, so I thought that would be a great way. We can lessen what you guys have to spend to equip the officers, why not? Um, there's also grants out there to pay for my next part of my job. I'm a child forensic interviewer. And what that is, is I am specially trained to be able to interview a child, so it's not leaving to them, so it holds up in court. So that the defense attorney can't, well, they do anyways, but they come in and I can say, I asked that question in the most open way possible and took what the kid said exactly and not added them and said, the shirt was blue, right? Those types of things, so that's what child forensic interviewing is, it's a very specialized skill. I have testified in many courts and done a lot of that as well as taught only child forensic is, I'm also trained in adult forensic interviewing, which is we get a victim that is very traumatized and has years and years of trauma. I'm trained in a special skill to be able to interview them so that we're getting the best out of their statement and not re-traumatizing them and asking more questions. So that's what the position would look like, um. Is this your project?
Yeah, so I wanna, I wanna back up and touch on forensic interviewing a little bit. I wish I could give you more details of what the last couple of weeks in Newcastle has entailed. But there were several opportunities we had that we could use a forensic interviewer and would have greatly benefited the cases we're working on. Very serious cases, uh, there's child victims involved and that's all I can really tell you for now. Statutorily, I think I would give myself trouble if I wanted to get further than that, but forensic interviewers are trained to ask children questions in a certain way that the defense attorney can't come and say, you led him into that answer. You led them in to say, this is what they did, or this is what they look like, or, or what have you. They're, they're trained to testify and give expert testimony after they're qualified as an expert witness in order to, um, be able to admit into evidence the things that you gain from a child. If I ask the child questions, every question I ask would be considered a leading question and I led that child into the answer. and I led that child into the answer. That's just how we're trained versus how the forensic interviewers train. So it's, it's something that's very important and child crimes are way more prevalent than we like to admit. We've had several very recently, they're pretty major, pretty major concerns. So it, it's a huge tool in those cases to have a forensic interviewer.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So is, is there some kind of certification process with the state? Like would, would your uh, forensic interviewing be recognized by the state of Wyoming?
So all my training is national training, um, so it is recognized by the state of Wyoming. The only thing we have to do is I have to have a hearing in front of a judge to be dirt deemed an expert witness in Wyoming courts. In Montana, it was a little bit different process and I was deemed an expert and testified there. Being Montana, it would just take our first case, the attorney would request a hearing, the judge asks me all kinds of questions and then deems if I'm an expert in Wyoming courts or not.
Thank you. So some of the, the benefits of this position, um, to go outside of the forensic interviewing is the acquisition and funding for programs and equipment through grant opportunities. We have a lot of equipment, especially right now, it's very outdated. We could get grants for training, um, potentially for, we, we need things like, we need new body cameras, we need new tasers. Basically they're expensive, but the new taser set, one taser set is nineteen hundred dollars. We need eight of them. That's a lot of money, so um, the grant thing to me is huge. It's, it's a way for us to get into other funding streams other than just saying, hey taxpayer, please give us some money. I mean, all grant money comes from the taxpayers somewhere, but we don't have to stress out the citizens of Newcastle or Weston County to, to dig that extra money out of. It would help me a lot in, in the regard, she provides clerical services to the department. That's part of what, what we decided we could build together in this position, uh, doing our neighbors reporting that's required by the state and federal government. Entering data into the RCAT system such as citations and warnings and things like that to bring up the officers and myself and having to do that and give them a little bit one time on the street. The community outreach program, portion of the program was another really enticing thing to me. She has a lot of certifications that would be very beneficial in, in giving uh, training and educational opportunities to the public and helping develop that bond between the public and the police department, rebuilding that public trust. And I guess I personally feel like they've kind of lost. I think we're gaining ground, but I think we have a long ways to go in that regard. Obviously she, we talked a lot about providing the child advocacy services to law enforcement. One thing about that, that is kind of like the dog, but uh, more so regionalized than, than using the dog. You know, I talked about with the dog program, we would go to Upton and we would, we would help other law enforcement officers in the area a little bit. One thing we, we did was called around, called Sheriff Hodgson, um, Crete County, we, we talked to Sheriff Colbar here, there in support of this program. It would be because of the way, uh, the grant that she's looking at applying for, uh, because of the nature of that, it would allow us to provide services outside of just Newcastle. So outside of Newcastle, the other law enforcement could use her forensic interviewing services for the same reason. And that's two-fold. It's not like we're gonna do a forensic interviewer every day, but if we could get one every week or two weeks to keep her fresh on her skills, that would be beneficial to everyone involved and, and help out other neighboring law enforcement agencies. The other thing that I think is enticing about this is given her experience with grant writing, she can help other city departments in some of the grant hiring processes, which I think would again help bring money to the city in general, not just the police. So this is a question I actually asked Jewel. Pardon my French, why the hell do you want me in Newcastle? Why, why me? Why here? It works well for us, I think, because I need that person to help out with the clerical stuff in the office, but we can also meld in the forensic interviewing portion of it and the community outreach portion of it. I think it'll work well. We're gonna put that all under one umbrella and that's, that's our pitch anyways. And we're kind of essentially located to other areas that need forensic interviewers. Crete County needs them, Niwara County needs them, even Channel County to a degree needs them. Um, there's, there's only two CACs, child advocacy centers in the state?
There are three, Jackson, Catsburg, and Cheyenne.
Okay, Jackson doesn't count anyways.
So would this be um, something that the other entities would pay for our, her service? So like, I know I'd sign checks for a forensic interview or a grant, would it be?
No, that's not the way we were thinking because of the grants I have, because that grant would help fund everybody, all, all interested law enforcement agencies. And the reason I, I say that, could we? I suppose we could. Is it the right thing to do? I don't really feel that it is because I think they're kind of doing us a favor in making sure that she's doing enough forensic interviews to keep her fresh. You know, we could have done two or three or four of them a couple of weeks ago, but we might have a, a lull in business, which is a good thing, but you know, having to go around to other counties. You know, she spends a day in Crete County one week, in Niwara County another week, and I haven't called Niwara County, I did, did get ahold of Sheriff Hodgson, but I, I haven't contacted the sheriff in Niwara County yet. I'm assuming they would be glad to have the services, but that way it keeps you fresh on your skills. That's, that's kind of what I was thinking. You know, I don't really want to go the route of charging, uh, other, the other CACs in Wyoming don't charge. It's a totally grant funded.
So would it be mileage and all that would be taken care of and would there be a specific vehicle in charge or?
That's details we honestly haven't worked out yet, but I would imagine mileage would probably be reimbursed on a personal vehicle, I would assume, just, but we honestly haven't worked out those details yet, so those, that's a big question though.
Those are things that can be covered on the track and completed.
So just some details of the position. Administrative support, provide day-to-day, uh, provide help during the day-to-day operations. Records keeping is a big one, like I talked about, the neighbors, or UCR reporting, neighbors is the new UCR. Case review, making sure things are complete, making sure things are entered correctly in the CAT system. Officer so-and-so, make sure you put your suspects, victims, witnesses. These are things that constantly come up, cause they're in a hurry and they're trying to get that app data kicked out and add in all their contacts in the CAT system. Should review that, make sure their cases are complete. Contracts, anything contractual that we need to do. Policies and procedures, another thing that we're currently trying to work on in the middle of all the other chaos, but it's not coming along here as fast as it needs to and needs to get done before it binds us. Financial and budget tasks, keeping track of the budget, keeping track of where we're spending money and preparing next year's budgets, so to say. Grant management, obviously seeking out and managing federal, state, and local grants. And then facilitating training that we receive through those grants, because there's a lot of reporting that comes with the grants, so you have to manage it automatically to let whoever awards you the grant know that you're fulfilling your end of the bargain.
Chief, I, I see, that, that's a pretty full plate. And then she's gonna be traveling around too? I think you're gonna be back there requesting another person to be a secretary.
Maybe.
So I know one of your staff interviews.
Yes.
Chief went with, uh, I, I was, I attended a grant writing USA class with one of your staff, so would she also facilitate um, learning and, and navigating the grant process with your other staff so you get, get them going on some of that stuff?
Yeah, which.
Actually, she might not be, she might not be your staff anymore.
Yeah, well, we're about that far away from yeah.
Oh, yeah, she didn't manage, yeah, well, the joint powers board to me, yeah.
Yeah, so, but no, I mean, I, I think with her experience, she can help teach other staff, but whether the other staff can dedicate that time to applying for grants.
No, it just completely eluded me that we have the joint powers board going and all that. That person I'm talking about is gonna be writing grants for the joint powers.
I mean, I would let her write grants for us. The community outreach portion of it, uh, would be some planning and execution of community events. Like she talked about, she has different training in that area. What, what was some of the training you had specifically?
Cyber safety is a big one right now. Um, I'm actually going at the end of the month to be trained on the Wyoming through the Wyoming ICAC, the Internet Crimes Against Children. So I'm certified in the Montana one, this one would be the Wyoming one, but it is not only going to the school and teaching the kids about what to be afraid of on the phone and how to keep themselves safe, but teaching the community, teaching the teachers, teaching the uh, parents, what are we seeing online? How can you prevent your child? So that's a big one. I've done financial classes for kids, for adults, and for elderly, where we go in and we teach them about scams, teach them about finances, how to protect themselves on that way. I have body safety classes from preschool all the way up to parents talking to their kids about body safety, how to keep, how to talk to their kids about keeping their bodies safe and um, what to do if they thought. I am a darkness to light trainer where I can hold community presentations on teaching the community how to spot child abuse, how to react to child abuse, and then how to report child abuse, and then aftercare. Human trafficking, um, I'm on the human trafficking task force that's here in, um, in Newcastle, that Office of Emergency Management. Sorry, I'm getting all the names down. Everything's the same in Montana, just names different, so it throws me off. So I'm already on the human trafficking task force, so I have training on how to spot, how to tell, and how to help somebody through human trafficking. Those are the ones that come off the top of my head, I have healthy relationships, all kinds of things like that.
One of the things with all the community outreach side of it is on use of the school resource officer as an example. Chief wants to put that position into place before he left. I never dreamed of the business that was gonna create. It's amazing the amount of work we get and it's, it's not good, but it's, it's not good that that stuff's out there, but it's good that we're, we're interdicting it and we're getting, getting in some of it and stopping it. I think this is gonna create the same thing. She talked a lot about classes that she gave in the school and all of a sudden within the next three days, you've got this major crime to report, otherwise probably wouldn't have reported. And it's different when it's, when it's her or it's Officer Moran's, then they're talking to a kid versus me. They don't want to tell me anything. It's not big, I'm ugly, I'm scary, whatever, you know? They're gonna tell them things that they're not gonna tell us, it's, it's a huge tool. So I, I really think that's a, that's a positive, a huge positive part, but is, is it helps make people comfortable in reporting the things that have happened and getting some justice for those, those crimes, especially with children. So just a few details about the child forensic interview part of it. That's for any, any person under the age of eighteen. And she's also trained to interview victims with complex crimes. Part of that forensic interviewing is peer review, reviewed by other forensic interviewers to make sure that they're maintaining best standard of practices. So that's another part of that.
So another huge part about a CAC is having a multidisciplinarity, uh, which is where law enforcement, DFS, um, sometimes the schools, the, um, sorry, the advocates, whether it's DV advocate, sexual assault advocate, or the county's advocate, um, the forensic interviewer, and then anybody involved in the case, we come together and we meet once a month. We talk about the cases, because child cases are very complex and very detailed. So we meet once a month, we talk about the new case that came in, where everybody's at, where's the family, how are things going? Did the child get into counseling? Do we need to do a secondary interview? Have we thought about other potential victims? And we see where DFS is. Is DFS thinking the child's going to stay in the home or leave the home? How can we work best together? So it takes all of those people that are off doing their own little thing and brings them all into one meeting and it focuses on the child. It focuses on that family, what are we doing best to serve them and get justice, whatever that justice looks like for that family? We also can call emergency meetings, so we have a really big case, we call an emergency meeting, everybody comes together, so this is what we have coming in, what do we need to do? And the county attorney's in on that, that's the one I was missing. And they can say, we need to do A, B, and C, have we thought about? Work it out together, so then we are putting that child first. So this is statistics, cause this always blows my mind, and this is the same in Wyoming as it is naturally. It's been studied, one in five girls has been abused, and that is sexual abuse, one in five. And that is by knowing only the people that have reported, so it's actually higher than that, because not everybody reports. One in twenty boys. Now, that is going up in today's age. It used to be a lot more because boys don't report and also the age of the internet, there's a lot more online sexual abuse of boys. So that goes up way, thirty percent between fourteen and seventeen are sexually abused. It causes a lot of depression, four times more likely to abuse substances, um, and PTSD. And this is the one that always kills me, only seven percent of child victims know, don't know their offender, so it's a stranger that hurt them. So that means ninety-three percent, terrible math, don't quiz me on math, um, victims know their perpetrator. They are a family member, a friend, or some kind of close acquaintance where they know they're, they know their abuser.
So we threw together a proposed budget for this position, because obviously that's what you guys need to make a decision on there. Obviously initially we would be funded under the police department. The end goal is to have at least a percentage of her position that's, that's not the advocacy portion, or that is the advocacy portion, grant funded, so we can hopefully recoup. What did we figure, twenty percent?
Yeah, we're thinking about twenty, twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent of that position through grant funding. And I think if all goes as planned, this, the cost of this position could be offset by grant funding for other equipment, so the money we don't spend on equipment that we get through grants will offset the cost of her position, I, I hope. I, I think that's a fairly reasonable goal anyways. We came up with a proposed salary. This is not a full-time position, so there's some details that need to be worked out here. We proposed a salary of thirty-nine thousand dollars a year, but that's only for thirty hours a week. That's not a full-time position. And it's a salaried position, so that's set, that's not a very. We wanted to do some flexible scheduling to accommodate another job she has, that's she refers to it as a chapter. It's, um, can you kind of tell them a little bit about that?
So part-time, I am the chapter director for the state of Wyoming for CACs. So my job for the state, it's not for the state exactly, it's a grant. So my job for the state, it's not for the state exactly, it's a grant-funded position through the National Child Alliance. But my main job is to bring in resources for CACs in Wyoming. Because we are rural, we don't have a lot of resources here. Bring in that funding, bring in those resources, and help other places create their own programs. So that we're not driving three hours to get a forensic interview and paying two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per interview. So that's my chapter job. Now, that is a totally flexible job. I usually work about twenty hours or less a week, and it's completely flexible. It's a night, weekend-type job. I have discussed with Dick, I have some meetings during the week, but those would all be in my flex time where I would fit it in. I'm a very, I know this is a full plate, I'm a very busy person, I don't sit still well. And to be honest, at my other job, I was working fifty hours a week. Straight hardcore work. The chapter job's easy. It's a lot of administration and just trying to bring in that extra funding to the state of Wyoming.
One of the details that we had landed on a solid conclusion there was the retirement portion of it. I had clerk Haggerty look at what it took to pay into a retirement plan. I think it was eighty, eighty hours, eighty-something hours a month.
Every two weeks.
Every two weeks. It was eighty hours in two weeks in order to pay into a retirement plan. Okay, high percentage of that then, so. Those are some details we would have to work out yet. I just wanted to get this idea out there to you guys and see what your feelings are about it. See how much more aggressively we want to pursue this idea. Obviously, it's a position that would have to be advertised, and the whole hiring process would have to be gone through. And Jewel's clearly interested in applying. Now finding somebody with these qualifications is rather difficult. There's not a lot of those people out there, so it would probably be a pretty limited pool.
We've already kind of seen how the application process goes in the rest of the county. So, I mean, we looked for a city administrator for a year and never landed one. We, I think we called him the city planner. Couldn't find anybody to be on our planning and zoning board. I don't know, but I feel that there is, it's necessary to post and look for applicants. But I mean, yeah, you don't just, yeah, right?
Pretty sure there's a legal requirement.
Well, when it comes to what you're presenting to us, I'm one-hundred percent supportive.
Is it something that we can move forward on, getting the finer details worked out, as some of the council will support?
I mean, I think that it's a good idea, I do. I mean, there's definitely a lot of legwork that needs to be done before we get to the point where we actually create a position. So I mean, I think that needs to start with personnel committee.
I'm in support of this, and I mean, my major concern is that when Newcastle City Council sets up a budget for this, that Newcastle City Council is taking care of that. That we're taking, our city is taken care of, that's what I care about. I don't care about your gallant around the country, you know, I care about Newcastle.
And Newcastle would be my priority. The other would be an assistant, and if my week turned out to be crazy and I got a call from Campbell County, sorry, but you may need to contact Casper. I have too much going on here, we have grants due, or whatever it may be.
So they can go other places?
Yes.
No, I'm concerned about our children in this community. I mean, my father was law enforcement here for a long time. And, yeah, and I kind of know, you know, some of the stuff that goes on around here, and I don't, I don't like it.
No.
Well, I think that people that don't know what's going on, me, I think we're kind of, our heads are in the sand, and I think it's out there, we just don't know it. And I definitely am for the safety of our children. And you're gonna be writing the grant to pay yourself, so, so I...
And you hit it on the head right there, you know? Some people do have their head in the sand.
Yeah. I mean, and I do, because I'm not, I mean, you know, when you're not involved, you don't realize that it truly is going on.
Because of the nature of offenses.
We don't hear about it.
Yeah, they can't be.
Right, right.
A lot of times, or at least portions of it, we have to public it, a certain phase in the judicial system.
And we don't ever want anything to happen, partially. That's totally, so, I'm for it, I mean, I'm in favor.
I support this one also, with knowing, you know, there's a lot of things that, like you said, it's not known, but you can't make it public because of the nature of the issue. So myself, I would make a motion that we support the efforts for you to hire for this position, for this executive assistance. And I could receive the petition.
All right, second.
We have a motion and second, any further discussion?
I definitely want to see it taken to the personnel committee. Now, this, you guys should need to sit down with those three councilmen and go for manning.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same thing. Just send an email out with some dates for personnel to get together.
I appreciate you guys' support. As with everything, we're trying to make the best of our way, like the state of times.
Chief, how are you on your overall manning of the police department?
So Mr. Briar, that we swore on tonight was number seven. I guess I always considered full staff being eight. The only thing we're lacking is an official investigator spot. Now the officers are doing a pretty darn good job of filling that role, but that comes with a lot of time. And it's taken away from other things. I'm just gonna be honest with you, the ordinance enforcement thing is gonna flop. It is not like the way I want it to do.
I like that.
These guys have been swamped for the last two solid weeks. Ever since I told everybody we were gonna kick off, and we issued one single notice. I don't, I can't say that for a hundred percent certainty, but it's not going as well as I want it to go. I may have to go a different route. I'm gonna give it a little bit more time and see. Think smooth out a little bit, and we can, we can get some of that ordinance enforcement done, but...
I kind of feel like the ordinance enforcement wasn't always at the forefront anyway. So it seems like it's a time filler, like it's something that they could do when they have time.
And I guess to put it bluntly, if I have a child victim of a crime, or I have something that has trash in their yard, we go take care of the child first, and we get to the trash, we get to the trash. It is a huge issue, because that's what people see. That's what the general public sees. The people that don't get to see the grim, and good for them, but they don't have the work it do, see the grim portion of what we do, they see the other portion. And they're like, why aren't you doing anything? Kind of dizzy. And I hate to come back and beg for staff with, you know, we have some numbers, but some I can't talk to. So it's hard for me to just jump together and say, we need more help, but we might get to that point, I don't know. And I would welcome any of you to come in and sit down and talk with me about where certain things are happening, and talk to me a little more confidently, although not publicly, because some of these things are very confidential, so. If you want a little bit more depth to your knowledge of what's going on, feel free to come in and sit down with me. But I really appreciate your support for this position.
And if, I mean, if this doesn't go further, which I will, if it does go further, thank you for what you did, because that can't be very easy thing.
No, but when you have a map for something, you go for it. I find their job a lot harder, because kids are easy, you just talk to them. But when they're dealing with idiots, to put it nicely, that's what I can't handle. So I love being able to help those kids, we do that for them, so.
Thank you, Dex.
Thank you.
So who's gonna put it, like, the ad out?
Well, he's gonna meet with the personnel.
The only other thing I didn't put on my agenda, unless you guys have any current questions about that.
Thank you.
The only thing I didn't put on my agenda was the Joint Powers Board update. We did interviews for the director position last week, so we're hoping to have some movement on that. We're moving forward background investigations on the candidates, so we'll kind of pick from there based on the outcome of the interviews and background investigation. The one thing that continues to be a thorn in our side is the insurance side of it. So the city is still, there are still employees of the city, but I got the board to agree to reimburse the city for their wages and benefits last week. So if we end up paying them through this month, the Joint Powers Board will reimburse the city for the employees' wages and benefits. And I basically am paying bills right now, toll bills and service bills that go with money for dispatch center. It's a tough transition to make, especially with the insurance stuff, but we're getting there slowly.
Any questions for Chief?
What do you have on that? They probably moved. That's the case, but...
Can't you see they took over parking lot?
Yeah, I knew that, I knew that, I apologize, I thought you meant the... I'm sorry, Stacey, sorry.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
It will be done to attorney double.
Thank you, ma'am mayor. Starting with the leases, I believe we have two. The first one that we read was the one that I brought up at the last meeting, it's a Central Wyoming College lease agreement. That would have terminated in February twenty-eighth of 2023. I'm not sure if we have had contact with them other than the emails that you and I have had, correct, Stacy?
Correct.
But basically, from what I could tell, they were interested in renewing the lease. It was just that the timing of when this was found, I believe it was March of last year?
Yes.
So they wanted to re-execute this, starting on that in February.
Just a little bit of property by the Orange Water tank to set their tower off.
But what did they pay for their lease?
Yeah.
I was looking for a revenue source, but I guess that's not it. Do you need something from us, like, okay, go ahead, and I know we knew their lease. Almost as is.
Are you stuck here?
We have a motion and second, any further discussion?
Does that mean anything in order, Owen?
The one thing I don't know is the actual physical property on the ground, I don't know what the status of it is. I assume it's fine, I assume it's a fenced-off area where they put all their television and telecommunications equipment, equipment. Other than that, the, I think the one thing I wanted to discuss on this was basically just to adjust the price for inflation. So the nine hundred dollars of 2019 for, I don't know how much it would go up, but you can go online and basically put that number in from 2019, and then retroactively change that sum to what it would be in 2024.
Isn't there state statutes that govern this as well, when we're talking telecommunications?
Yeah.
For the pricing.
So we need to amend the motion to reflect inflation or the statute for telecommunications?
Okay, so amended.
Second.
So we have it amended as second, any further discussion? So will you check in to cut the pricing change?
Thank you, and we're done, do you have access, because I slipped through that calendar later, correct?
Yeah, and I can look into it and discuss it with them as well, if you'd like.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same thing.
Thank you. The next lease we have, and I think there is a new offer, and I had a chance to read, I believe this lease actually is adjusted for inflation. But this is the Collins Communications lease agreement. It's just covering their tower for telecommunications as well.
This was twenty-five hundred years, so...
That's their new offer, right? Because I just have the prior lease agreement. No, I think you did, I just didn't see it in here. Yeah, that's twenty-five hundred. This was issued, yeah, so this is the new offer, twenty-five hundred dollars.
I'm seeing here a twenty-six oh four. Number two rental. We see shall pay two thousand six hundred and four dollars for a term of five years annually. Page two.
That's an overpayment, isn't it? That's 2018, imagine.
That's what they were getting charged in 2018, essentially.
Yeah, maybe we should look at that. Well, I kind of like your idea, double of inflation. Because we, everything costs on us more.
This new is a ten-year, this is an older, a five-year.
What do you think about going five years and go for three grand? Seriously?
Because they're doubling their lease, kind of lowering the block.
I don't think that's, that's not good for us.
Basically, it would just need to go up from that twenty-six hundred, because, I mean, there's no possible way that the price, the price that we'd be paying, I get that their costs are going up a sort of order, so...
How about I move that we give Dublin authority to negotiate with these people and go for a five-year contract and three grand?
So are we doing an amendment thing?
Amendment? Oh, there's already a motion on the board to do this one? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, that's an amendment?
No, I didn't hear it. Yeah, the motion was for the prior lease agreement.
Mine's, I apologize.
So, yeah, I just, let's operate Dublin to finish this up. Perimeters of, get more than 2,604.
A list, too.
And then lastly, I think is the.
Do we have to vote on that?
Yes, okay.
Okay, so I'll second, so we can discuss, because I wasn't clear on the on the motion.
So we have a motion and second. Any discussion?
Okay, the motion is for, we just, as a council, we move this to our attorney and let him negotiate with these people to see what's available, what they'll do. And the parameters were five years and $3,000. Was it with our hope? We're not obligated to get that.
Yeah, so the prior amount in 2018 was 2,604. So you're, in your motion, you're suggesting that we move it to $3,000.
Right.
Dollars a year, four or five years.
Yes.
But what if that's less than what we could get for inflation or for whatever the statute says about communications and telecommunications?
But that's why we said to have Dublin negotiate.
But then he gave a very specific dollar amount, $3,000.
But that was a guidance. That's a suggestion, not a have to. I said that, too.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on what I was seconding, and so I'm in agreeance with that.
You're in agreements without putting a cap on it. I mean, you're wanting Dublin to check.
To be able to.
Yeah, to check it out.
Do the stuff.
Yeah.
All right, everybody, you're ready?
I agree.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposing things, same thing.
Thank you, counsel. The last thing we have here is the franchise agreement between Preston Communications, locally known as Charter Communications. One thing that I wanted to bring up with this is this, while it did, the agreement, the franchise agreement did lapse, it also has renewed under the renewal clause of this franchise agreement.
So we don't have any to vote on?
So it's an extension here. So section two grant to franchise on page two, or 2.2 term. The franchise and the rights, privileges, and authority hereby granted shall be for an initial term of five years commencing on the effective date of this franchise is set forth in section 14.10. The effective date was five years.
So July 17th, 2017?
Yep. The franchise will be automatically extended for an additional term of five years from the expiration date is set forth in section 14.10, unless either party notifies the other in writing of its desire to not exercise this automatic extension and enter renewal negotiations under the Cable Act, at least three years before the expiration of this franchise. So actually, the only thing the council could do, I mean, obviously, you guys could reneg on your duties under a contract, which I would not advise. But the only thing that could be done as of right now is giving notice for the next additional term.
Think we should do that?
I don't know. Has there been issues with Charter Communications with the city or?
Your husband?
No.
Are you just shaking his head?
Madam Mayor, yes, there has. We've had issues with them laying cables on the lot in the ground for two, three, four years at a time when they're supposed to be buried within a reasonable timeframe. We've had trouble with them in this clause, they, there's agreement that should have been required to restore the public ways, while leaving dirt trenches and drowdy alleys. Yeah, they were drilling holes, corn and everything, so they could cross a gas line, and then they put chips or fines or something like that in it, and all of those places have now settled in our streets. And whenever we find a cable TV line, we cannot get a hold of anybody to get it in the repair DC, tell us what to do with it. Yes, we've had issues with Charter.
So is it a violation of the contract that we have that we can go till before three years?
I'm not sure. I haven't had a chance to really review it. We need to have one place, and they were told about it many, many times, including by itself, and we need help. How about a cable mess they've got down in Cambridge Creek that nobody wants to take ownership of? I'm ranging way down there with a pair of bolt cutters and just start cutting wires and getting it out of the way so we can dig it range. We've got a state range that's partially blocked, and we can't do anything because we've got lots of cable in all of the places.
So just to clarify, section 13 on page nine for enforcement or revocation, they have a notice of violation. This is basically just, in a lot of ways, it's an administrative hearing sort of means of curing breaches or minor breaches under the contract. I believe what you do, what we could do, Greg, especially if you're seeing that many issues, is basically put together a notice, and then you have, I can't remember, I think it's 30 days from the receipt of that notice for them to cure all of those things. Now, obviously, if it's that extensive, they're not going to be able to do that within 30 days. But you could give them an extension, and if they fail to, you know, basically respond, or if they don't fix it, then that would be considered a breach if they own the contract.
Yes, because we have difficulties in past due.
On page six and 8.5, it says restoration of public way, grantee at its own expense will restore any damage or disturbance caused to the public way as a result of its operation, construction, or maintenance. So that's there. You can tell them, hey, they're good.
We do.
Oh, and they know there.
So let's send another email with all that, like Dublin said, and we'll just have him attached to it, and the council.
The other problem I have is, where do I send it? Because every time we send it to you, there's an.
There's that.
So I guess, for my purpose, I would like a point of contact.
There is a guarantee with the email on page twelve.
Yeah, it says notices.
Because what we ran into in the past is we'll be reading, especially at night, we'll hit a cable TV line that's marked, and we spend two, three hours on the phone with Charter. Because if you don't have an account at that address, we can't get anything done. So our citizen is sitting here without service because their guys don't communicate, and we can't get a hold of them.
There's an email and an address, and we send it certified.
We'll do that.
And to have that email, this is probably.
Yeah, I guess I'm not sure I did find this email as a contact, but it was just from the previous email.
Yes, I would like a clause stating that they have to keep it up. Contact, reverse of contact, you know, for us, because we, I spent up to three hours on the phone with them. And still got nowhere, the line is still sticking to the ground five years old.
You know, I think another thing we should need here is that if they don't fix something, that we can fix it and bill them for it, or do something, you know.
We, Councilman Boss, we do not have the capabilities or the experience of attorney to fix any of their stuff.
Oh, no, I mean, potholes, the things that they leave in the way. If they're leaving one of our streets messed up, we can fix the street. And then we can, we can't put a lien on their property, we could do something, you know.
Charge them, back charge them for the amount of labor that.
Yeah, yeah, back charge them. And at a, you know, 55% rate of maintenance. Monthly.
Does anybody even use cable anymore?
There are a lot of people.
Is there still a lot of people who use cable?
Evidently, they're still here.
Well, I mean, I dug through some of their cable.
It's your fault.
They were big ones.
And have a.
Are these the fiber optic guys?
You just tested.
Cable TV.
They have fiber as well as RTV, so both companies are moving towards fiber. When was that? 2019? We had both Charter and RTV at Range replacing fiber, replacing lines in Newcastle. At one point, I made 17 boring machines in Newcastle already at the same time. That's all we got done was working around those guys. We need to get another thing done in a year.
They were, they were boring through our lines.
Sometimes two and three a week.
All right, I'll send you those numbers.
So are we doing anything with this lease agreement right now then, or are we gonna revisit this?
I think it should be tabled for.
I think it would be tabled. The reason being is, obviously, it's in effect. However, in terms of giving notice, I wasn't aware of all of the issues, obviously, that they've got, so. Fortunately, I guess for them, they have a contract that's enforced as of right now, and they have to abide by it.
I'll get you a list.
Take pictures.
You can provide pictures, I guarantee you.
One of those notes should work.
And I believe that's everything I have, Madam Mayor.
I have a question for you. Have you got a chance to look at the comment that we used in events documents from the state parent?
No. I'm not sure. I know we had a discussion and we're moving forward with that, but I didn't know if there was an actual date to when that agreement needed to be done.
I know we have a meeting, another meeting coming up, maybe we can pitch you.
Didn't just come up at the Parks Committee meeting the other day? But we needed to revisit the MOU thing, and they wanted some kind of formal MOU.
What are the meeting's schedule? Well, we're getting stuff to Mark, and then he will set up another time for someone. Or Matt with all rest, oh, sorry.
What's the MOU?
Um, understanding.
Is that any simple words?
Okay. Okay, anything else for Attorney? City clerk treasurer, Stacy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first thing I have is I had emailed you guys out with the information or letting you know that we have $5,743.66 to allocate for the Wyoming Community Gas Community Project. Years, last year, we designated some money towards Christmas decorations and then some for the speed sign. Years prior, we had designated that money towards the Dell Park Restrooms. It sounds like those restrooms are probably going to need to be rebid at some point in time, and I'm not sure where that's going to probably come in. Currently, the last designation gave that project about $38,000.
The restrooms? Thirty-eight thousand.
Was what had been kind of allocated through the community gas project designations.
Madam Mayor, I agree with what Kirk Agar is saying, that the price is going to go up in the bathrooms. We don't know when we're gonna get them with UVC, and every year it's jumped 20% since we did this out for inflation purposes. When we're using that money as our match funds for the grant, for the bathrooms, while we're using it for.
One of the issues with the UVC suit is, is I have full confidence in getting a judgment. The issue is, is he solvent?
Okay, exactly.
Yeah. I mean, he could be in the Bahamas and have a bankruptcy proceeding pending here, and who knows?
On our money, he's in the Bahamas, on our money.
Yeah, so we had been using it to pay towards the bathrooms, right? So, I mean, since we're probably not getting a precast constructed building, then would we need to look at some kind of alternate type of building that we could use this money towards? I don't find it very interesting to use the $5,700 bucks on the bathroom that we thought was bought and paid for. I kind of feel like it'd be better spent somewhere else where we could use it. But I mean, if we have to come up with.
Or Christmas decorations.
Another plan took for the bathroom, then it might make sense to use that money towards the bathroom.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Owens, where would we come up with a plan? My thought is after we settle with UVC and we get things back on flat level ground again, we would rebid this. There's other, there's one other manufacturer I know that's ready to bid on at any time. They were the last ones to bid on the project, or they were the second bidder on the project, but they were more money. It was, I want to say 18,000 worth. Their bid was about 18,000 worth now, and the one we took, so.
We would have got a little bit bigger.
We, I still, I still intend on.
No, we did.
Looking at a pretty built building. So we've already got everything stuffed up, talking with the other company, one other company, they said they can do, we might have to do a little bit of changing on some of the stuff we've done underground, but for the most part, it's complete. We're ready to set building other electricity.
Is the, is the bathroom that's currently there still functional? Are we having to use Blue Rooms?
Well, it's functional.
The way it was when I worked there, so it's still back and open?
We've got issues with the water service, and it's to the point where probably we have to go below the building to get it fixed next year. We keep having leaks and it keeps working backwards towards the floor. If we have to do that, we're gonna have to take out part of the floor, dig it up. Who knows what all we're gonna have to do to get water to the building next time? Because we're, we're right at going up to the floor right now.
So, only it'd be nice to have a bathroom back at the park.
Well, if ours were, that's a couple of months, I wouldn't get.
Councilman Boss, that's what we're gonna do if we have to.
Well, that's, that's gonna take out.
For the winter, but we do that anyway.
So what's the plan with the 5,700? What was it, 5,700?
What did you do, 40 Christmas decorations last year, Chris?
We got all the Christmas decorations, we need a.
No, we did not. We only got half of them.
We need a pump track.
I don't remember. It was around, around $6,000. Four to 6,000 somewhere, I can't remember.
And they're all electric, so everything that we newly purchased doesn't match anything we.
And our original decorations are officially 20 years old, including the garlands.
As long as we're talking about this, let's not put the red ribbons back up, too. They look awful. The red ribbons look awful.
Yeah. None of it's cheap. I'd price for you for.
Do we have to decide what we do with this money tonight?
Have this, but have.
It'd be nice to.
To do what?
To decide what we're gonna do with this, right?
It'd just be nice to have that court hearing, brother.
Yeah.
So would we table this until March, so we know what happens at the court thing on the 27th?
One of the things with that is, is once we have the judgment, we'll have to seek out properties to put judgments and labels upon. So it'll be, it's a longer process than just March is.
Well, I know, but at least we'll have an idea of what judgment is.
Yeah. I mean, in theory, that's the, I mean, it's expected with it as of right now. He could, again, be in a ditch somewhere, you know, so.
So what are we gonna do when we have the Chinon show? I'm gonna have.
We'll have.
We're not. Um, I'm gonna have, we're not gonna have ribbons or porta potties, but...
Maybe we can have some pink robes there, too. Let's just go, like, Kentucky and have a little red button or the disco balls, too.
I mean, I think the precast suit is gonna be quite a bit more time, like, so if the judgment's in March, and then you have to seek out liens and properties, I mean, we might be talking about this the following March. Those of us that are still on the council, so, uh...
But I was just saying that if they have the judgment on the twenty-seventh, when we come in on the fourth, we'll have a better idea of what that is, and we have more ideas of what else to put the money towards, if the, the bathroom.
Mayor, Council, uh, one thing, we are going to look at more expense than matter what we're doing with the bathroom, with the replacement.
I think that's a priority.
Yeah, the bathroom, our...
We have, we have nothing budgeted for that bathroom because we thought we bought it.
Yeah. The smart thing to do is to do...
Well, yeah, we did buy it, we did buy it.
Thompson's not given citations, I don't give decorations.
So I know that we allocate the five thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-six cents to the bathroom fund at Dow Park?
Second.
We have a motion and second, any further discussion?
I wanna have it go to the pump track.
I mean, I, I made the motion, but I'm not, like, enthused about it. Well, we do need a bathroom at the park, and it is the center of one of our main events in Newcastle. So it's important that we have a working bathroom there, and one that doesn't back up and flood, doesn't have, or that has reliable water service. I mean, and then nobody likes using a blue room. I've had about thirty jobs since I got out of high school, and it's never a pleasurable experience going into a porta potty. Doesn't matter where you're at.
That makes a lot of sense, Councilman Ty. I gotta go along with him again, I, I seconded his motion, so.
So if there's no more further discussion on, if ever say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same thing?
Jerry, you did vote.
I mean, I, I made the motion, it's really boring, okay? I didn't like it.
Yes, sure, it's boring. All right, let's go on to the next thing.
The next, the next thing is, um, did the council have anyone they would like to nominate as a voting member for the joint powers for, for the Wyoming Community Gas?
No, I don't.
I just... And I had no idea, does anybody... Is set on the, as a voting member of Wyoming Community Gas? Does anybody have time for some of that, that action? Because we need somebody, right, Kirk Agger?
We can, I don't know that we, we've had anybody the last time, I don't believe. Just thought I would, for what it on, because I received an email.
Where do they hold the meetings at? Jackson?
Take your skis.
Did, did I pay you a mile, I didn't turn you down, I got out there to...
I believe possibly Casper, but I'm not positive. I could check if you'd like me to.
I hate going into Casper.
Right, I will check as to where the meetings are held in.
It sounds good to buy.
Would you rather drive to Jackson?
It's a pretty drive.
It's a pretty drive, once you get past Wright.
The next thing I have is I had emailed, um, the council regarding the required, um, public board trainings to the Department of Audit. It does, um, appear that they are actually doing self-paced trainings, where, um, anybody needing that training could just get online and do them at their own pace, and then take the test and get their certificates. Um, is anybody interested in that? Or we did have a tentative, um, meeting set with Mary Martin through EWC outreach for March eleventh?
Is that on your live or...
That will be here, at, in the...
Is that Vicki?
Um, it's went through Vicki's office, but it's Mary Martin.
Okay. Me, too.
Is that the public officer training, is that what that is?
Yeah.
One of the attorneys advised that I should probably take that training because of being on the joint power.
Uh, yeah, actually, all your board, anybody on the board that has anything to do with financing or anything?
Some of them have already taken it, but... Is that something available to them?
Yes, we have to, yes. I think we need to email all the, because I had, um, a rep board call me and told me, yes, they need to take it, too. So, I'm just, you have the other boards, like, from Plaine and Zellwien and...
They don't deal with money. Um, I told, actually, the last, um, correspondence was her, with her, was that, I believe, afternoon is gonna be better for Donnie, and you were kind of wanting somewhat more in the care, so I think we're shooting more in the afternoon, from like one to four.
It's only a three-hour training?
Oh, I'm sorry, we got one to five, I'm sorry, Ty, but four hours.
Four-hour training? I mean, I'm interested in, uh, do it at your own pace, but, um, I mean, uh, finding time to do that when I could just, you know, devote four hours?
I will just keep the March eleventh then, and like I said, um, it was a little bit tentative, but I will get the...
Are you making a list of people that are interested in the March eleventh?
No, I went through class.
So it doesn't matter?
Right, if you guys obtain your certificates through the...
Self-paced.
Self-one.
But we can just show it for March eleventh.
Absolutely, whatever. Yep, and I will, um, send emails out confirming that, too.
You, you already provided us the ways or whether it's self-paced on that last email, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, the last thing I have is just to remind the council that the next meeting is actually on the Tuesday, February twentieth, President's Day being that Monday, and of course, we already talked about six o'clock. That's all I have.
Any other questions for City Clerk? Any standing committee reports?
Actually, Madam Mayor, there is, um, we had a Water and Sewer Committee, uh, meeting, uh, on January twenty-ninth at five P M. at the council chambers. We went over some of the new, um, requirements of the, uh, of the S R, uh, State S R F program. Um, they, they changed quite a bit. And, uh, now they've also changed how we enlist and enroll, um, projects onto the intended use plan. So the intended use plan is, uh, they're trying to make it so that we have to, um, get our project enrolled and, and funded and everything within that, that fiscal year, or, or the following fiscal year?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilman, it's actually the fiscal year you're planning to do the project.
Right.
So like, the twenty-twenty-five improvements we're planning on doing, that is twenty-twenty-five, we have to complete the project that year.
Yeah, so they're trying to make it so that you utilize the funding more quickly, and that the projects are more shovel-ready. Um, they're trying to expedite the process, and then they're trying to clean up the intended use plan so that it isn't full of projects that have been sitting on there getting recertified year after year after year. Um, and then we, uh, we already discussed the, the resolution, uh, seeking the one million dollars in M R G, uh, funds to go towards the, uh, um, the Delaware York and, uh, North Sonora and East Wentworth, the Water and Sewer projects. Um, so we'll knock a million bucks off of that project. So then it'll, uh, the, the city will only be, uh, responsible for, uh, one million ninety-three thousand and five hundred and twelve dollars and two cents. So, uh, if we get the M R G money, which I really hope that we do, because those projects both need to be done with all of our, um, really outdated and failing infrastructure. Uh, then we also talked about, um, uh, the, um, our original plan to submit for funding, um, for a wastewater and stormwater master plan. Um, uh, Public Works Supervisor Stone found out that, um, it would, it would actually kill two birds with one stone if we did a capital improvements, uh, plan instead. Because then we could actually incorporate the water and with, and storm, or wastewater and stormwater, uh, plan into the capital improvements plan, and then we could look at budgeting for those and, and looking at those in the future. Um, and then, uh, he showed us his, uh, operations and maintenance manual that he put together. Um, uh, it's part of our, uh, capacity development stuff so that we can get funded and get grants, and it looked, uh, it looked well put together to me. Um, we talked about our current loans, and, uh, and then we also looked at the list of projects, uh, um, for the next ten years that would be probably, uh, uh, try to get put into, or, uh, list of projects for the next ten years, which is a subject to change after, oh, yeah, after the water master plan that we're gonna have, um, that's gonna, should be done this summer, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and then, uh, then we can, uh, take the, the ten years' worth of projects and put them on for the capital improvements. And then, uh, then we also talked about, uh, uh, paying off two mystery loans that we didn't know exactly what they were, um, on there for, they, they happened with one of the previous regimes. And we were just talking about how it would be fiscally, uh, responsible to maybe look at trying to pay those off next budget year. And, uh, that would streamline our loans and stuff to projects that we...
Both under a hundred grand.
Yeah, I, I think they would be at a hundred thousand dollars or...
One was for a hundred and ten thousand, one was for one hundred and one thousand. The problem is the interest over the thirty-year period could be doubled the cost of the project. And you would pay almost a hundred thousand dollars for each loan. Uh, they're GPA loans. I gotta call into Ossley to figure out what those projects are, but, uh, yeah, my, my recommendation is to pay them off. We have to save our interest, spend the money somewhere else.
Which, which seemed to make sense to all of us. So, I mean, does that, um, weren't you looking into? There was some kind of requirement from the state, or, or was that one of the other line items that we discussed?
Um, just the RFQ.
Sorry?
Or we can proceed with engineering on, uh, the twenty-twenty-five improvements project, because they do have sewer projects involved in them. We do have to do a, call an RFQ, a request for qualification... From an engineering firm, so we'll have to interview engineering firms and get a contract with the one that we choose based on their qualifications. It's, it's a big part of the S R F requirements.
New requirement, and that's gonna make things a little bit more clunky than they already are.
It'll take a little more time to jump through there, but, uh, I think we have to jump through.
Um, so, and to, in order to take care of those two loans, I mean, it was the, um, recommendation of the Water and Sewer Committee that we look at paying those off, um, prior to the thirty-year time span that they've been taking out for. So, uh, is there a finer motion? Do we need to add something with that in budget right now?
Count, Mayor, uh, Councilman, if, if it places, Council, if I could, I would add that into our budget and prepare for the next fiscal year. If, if that'll work, uh, we don't really have the money to pay it off right now.
Right, so we're, we're, we're trying to pay it off next fiscal year, but do, are you're gonna like...
Build it into our budget.
Build it into your budget and take a, a two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-dollar cut?
Uh, hundred and sixty-four thousand is what it is.
Is it?
That, it's something fiscally responsible to me to, to save the amount.
Well, you said one oh-one and one ten?
I don't, oh, they're partially paid down.
Okay, so that was the original amount of...
Yeah, that was the original amount, I don't remember what the current amount is, current is right now, so I have to look that up.
You're prepared to take almost two hundred thousand dollars cut to your budget?
To me, that's something we need to budget for in the next fiscal year.
Okay.
I would recommend we have those discussions during, during budget, budget talks.
Okay, so I guess this last part was just for you guys as an attorney.
Councilor, I have a question. On your water thing, have we heard back from, uh, water rates?
We're in the process of giving them the information. I've got, I've got something to clean up before we send it to them. It's our, where our services are. Kirk Agger, he's gotten all the information, you know, I'm just trying to get it all pushed in with my stuff, so we set it all. We have talked with him about the capital improvements plan and his, his recommendations for that. I gotta stare at the spreadsheet for a while and figure out what, what it is, so. Um, we're still visiting with him about the capital improvements portion.
I hate to pay money out and not get any response.
No, so, um, that's part, and it's, don't you have that in your report?
Uh, not in this one. Um, right now, we currently don't have the luxury of reporting, Councilman, simply because we haven't gotten all the information yet, so. Kirk Agger's done her part, I've been working on mine.
So you've been working with Carl Brown?
I've sent, we've sent several emails back and forth discussing. He was one of the, of our ten year plan projects, that's where they started and, and things like that.
Stacy says it might go up.
What's that?
The rates might go up.
Yeah.
But it's getting close to watering our yard, Todd.
We're working on it. We, unfortunately, we have two other projects we're working on at the same time, they're fairly large, and there's not enough people to go around.
So the price per thousand is already super high. So, um, I, I know a little bit about this stuff, so I don't think that our price per thousand is gonna be at seven dollars anymore, which I think is one of the big problems with the amount of money that people are paying on their water bill during the irrigation times. So, um, I think, you know, this is just my guess, that our base rate will probably come up, and the price per thousand is gonna come down. But that's just my educated opinion. Um, we'll see how it all pans out, but I don't think it could get much worse than what happened this summer. So, uh, anything better than that is, uh, is a win in my book. Oh, yeah, that's all I got, thanks.
All right, any other business? Claims against the city dated February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four?
Madam Mayor, I moved up you pay the claims against the city.
Okay, we have a motion second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What I've seen.
Please note that. Okay, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm only adjourned, Madam Mayor.
In second?
Okay, we have a motion second, any further discussion? Um, if ever say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
I guess we got spoiled with the last one, you know, with the, uh... My legs felt...